Good evening. Welcome to the November 27th, 2023 regular meeting of the City of Coolidge City Council. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Norma, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Tom Bagnall.
Present.
Councilmember Audrey Sabetra.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Hudson.
Here.
Mayor John Thompson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jackie Henry.
Here.
Councilmember Tatiana Murrieta.
Here.
And Councilmember Eric Daniels.
Here.
We are all present and have a core, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Norma. First order of business is presentations, item three, presentation from Wilson and Company for the Sun Corridor for the 2050 Regional Transportation Plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'm here with Sun Corridor MPO and Wilson and Company. I've got the approved language here that I'm just going to skim over real quick. Long story short, Sun Corridor is going through their transportation plan, planning everything out. The TAC Committee has been with the Sun Corridor and they're actually out at our GAIN event. And Amy's going to go through everything on here, so I don't want to beat you to death on what's going on. It's just some long-range planning, so they can decide how to fund the upcoming projects, what we're looking at and what we can expect. So I'll let Amy get to it. She's a mixed master, so I'm going to pull the mic off for her so she can actually see what she's talking about.
Well, thank you, Ben. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. I'm hoping that I can figure out this technology as we go through this presentation. So bear with me if I run into a couple glitches. So today, we're just going to talk a little bit about the project objectives, some of the metrics that we're looking at in the context of the plan. I'll go over some of the results of the public and stakeholder outreach. And then we'll talk a little bit about the recommended investment strategy and some projects of opportunity that have been identified. And then just go over where we're going to go from here. The project objectives really are to meet some of the federal requirements. This RTP is required to be updated every four years. The last one was adopted in 2020. So we will need to update this by March of 2024. Part of that is due to the fact that Sun Corridor MPO region is within the Pinnell County non-attainment area for air quality. We also want to make sure that we're looking at the ADOT performance targets. Again, that's part of the federal requirements, that the RTP has targets and it's quite helpful to adhere to those that were already established for the state by ADOT. Again, we want to make sure that we're adequately engaging stakeholders and the public so we understand what their priorities are, so that we can get to potentially new multimodal priorities. So again, this plan is multimodal. It's not just roadway focused, it's focused on all modes of travel. Ultimately, we want to arrive at a recommended investment strategy. How are we going to use the money that's allocated to the MPO each year? We need to make sure, again, going back to that air quality conformity that I mentioned, and then also looking at the way that the projects are prioritized and selected for receipt of funds. Just to put it in perspective, what are we dealing with here? In the next 25 years, it's expected that the Sun Corridor MPO region will just about triple in population as well in employment. So that's some pretty substantial growth that we need to look at. And I'm sure as residents, you're all aware, there's already some pretty substantial needs here. So just kind of thinking about what that might look like once we triple what's already on the ground today. I spoke about those ADOT targets. They've got specific targets related to infrastructure conditions. So how are your roads? How are your bridges? What's their state of repair? System reliability? Is it pretty consistent for people to travel through or is there a lot of fluctuation in travel time within the region? Freight movement and economic vitality important, congestion reduction, environmental sustainability. Safety, of course, is always something that we want to be thinking about as we talk about our transportation system. And then again, as I mentioned, it's not just a roadway plan, it also deals with transit. So the distinction is here is when we look at these ADOT targets, it's really focused on sort of the national highway system and the state. And that really doesn't address the majority of the roads that people use in this region, right? So as a group, we also decided it'd be important to look at some local performance metrics. So this is really going to give a better snapshot of the majority of the roads that are within the Sun Corridor region. And so that focus is now on arterial and collector, roadway and bridge conditions. Mobility, what is the level of service? How easy is it to get around? Economic vitality, are we building the appropriate transportation structure to support economic development? And then transit service and ridership, how is that looking? Are we doing a good job in increasing or improving the ridership and the accessibility for transit? Are we getting people to the right places? And then again, bicycle and pedestrian, how does it look for connectivity of our sidewalks, bike lanes, multi-use paths? And then finally, environmental, going back again to air quality, are we being good stewards to the environment? Generally speaking, with regard to those performance measures, the region has been doing really well over the past several years. I mentioned that public and stakeholder outreach is an important component of this plan. Back in the beginning of the year, we had a series of stakeholder interviews and an initial round of public engagement. And then just within the past kind of couple months, we did our second round of public engagement. And then we're here now kind of doing the roadshow with the city councils and board of supervisors for the Sun Corridor MPO member agencies. Those initial stakeholder interviews focused on representatives from each member agency, planning and economic development departments, so Costa Grande, Coolidge, Eloy and Pinnell County, as well as some of the larger stakeholders in the region, so Arizona Game and Fish, State Land, Army National Guard. And thematically, we heard from them some, you know, common things. We heard about the need for new roads. We heard about the need for maintaining what we have. We heard about the need for redundancy. Can we get some parallel routes in case we have something that happens that shuts down one of our major arteries? We heard, of course, about freight. We heard about transit. And a lot of that actually related to the need to make sure that we have adequate ways for people to get to work. We also did our initial round of public engagement. That consisted of pop-up events. So we just went out to the public at a regularly scheduled event and kind of asked for their input. We also put some information on the buses so that they could respond to surveys, QR code, they could pop it up on their phone while they were riding the bus and take an online survey. And we also worked and put some utility bill inserts as well, so trying to reach a variety of the population. From that outreach, we got about 130 responses to those surveys. And then we had about 25 people who provided some demographic information, as well as about 15 people who cited some comments on the maps. And what they told us was really the majority of them drive. I guess that's not a big surprise. But what I did find a little, I guess, surprising and somewhat encouraging is that we've got almost 20% of the population that also considers walking a significant trip. When it came to primary trip purpose, little over a third of folks were traveling for work, also a pretty high percentage for shopping as well. And then we've got medical school and then a variety of other use. When we asked them about their transportation priorities, by far, most of them said, we need to focus on improving our existing road. We also had a pretty significant percentage that wanted to focus on increasing the capacity of existing roads. So for example, adding new lanes, turn lanes at intersections, things like that. And then over half the people commented that we should think about building new roads, we should think about expanding transit, and we certainly want to focus on reducing fatal serious injury crashes. Our second round of public engagement focused a little bit less on sort of what do we think the needs are and sort of shifted to what do we think the priorities are in terms of how we should be spending our money? We did have three in-person events. Ben mentioned we were here in Coolidge at the GAIN event. We also did similar events in Eloy and Costa Grande. And those were all supplemented by an online survey for folks who could not attend those in-person events. When we asked them what their feedback was on priorities and we gave them a variety of ideas, safety, environment, technology, newer, wider roads, maintenance, pedestrian and bicycle, transit, and focusing on improvements that would enhance economic development, far and away, folks indicated that the majority of their priority fell with safety. I think that's a good message. I think everybody's always focusing on safety. A little surprised that we saw so much emphasis on the environment and technology. I will say what I found to probably be part of the reason for that is there was a lot of younger individuals that participated in these activities when we were at these GAIN events and even, you know, downtown elementary school children. So when you're trying to explain what these different categories mean to them, that was in their mind, you know, kind of what they thought was important, this idea of protecting the environment and trying to integrate technology. When we asked the public, if you had 100 bucks, how would you spend it? We gave them each 10 stickers, each was 10 bucks. Put it where you can in these categories of preservation, so that's kind of protecting what you have, bringing your, you know, looking at your pavement condition, your bridge condition. Modernization, a lot of that is, you know, bringing roadways up to current standards or making them safer. And then expansion would be new or wider roads. Pretty even split, about a third for each of those. So let's talk about now how we came to where we currently are on recommended investment strategy. So I'm just going to take a quick step back. Sometimes when you think about transportation plans, they result in a map that has a bunch of projects. This is a policy-based plan. So it does not specifically say, here are the dollars for the projects that we are going to spend on. It is, here's how we believe we should allocate the money that's available to us to different types of projects. So currently, in the 2020 plan, the three investment categories, expansion, preservation, modernization. The allocation's about 15% to expansion, 35% to preservation, 50% to modernization. When we take a look at how that correlates, so again, the recommended one is in the center here, how it correlates to how Sun Corridor MPO has historically been investing its funds, it's pretty darn close. We've got 15% for expansion, 33% for preservation, and 52%. So that's pretty close to the recommended. I do want to point out, though, that Sun Corridor MPO has been very successful in helping its member agencies receive additional funding. So not directly allocated money, but applying for other grant opportunities that bring other money into the region. And because of those additional funding sources, of all of the investment that's being made in the region, about 66% of it is going into modernization and 27% into expansion. So again, those are those grant programs, like the Highway Safety Improvement Program, that's a competitive program through the State Department of Transportation. So when we look at the public feedback versus the recommended investment choice versus total regional resources, you know, first off, we might think, wow, they were a third, a third, a third. And that's pretty far off from where we are at, you know, 15, 35, 50. But the reality is that in the areas where, you know, they think that there is a higher need, for example, in expansion, that 36% relative to the actual recommendation for 15%, when you look at the total regional resource allocation, it's getting closer to hitting that target. And so I think we hear what they're saying. I think the reality of the funding level, not even a million dollars annually for the Sun Corridor MPO region, it's going to be really important to continue to look for those opportunity supplemental funds so that a larger draw, a larger funding pot can be brought in and try to balance, you know, what seems to be appropriate for the region from a stakeholder perspective and investor perspective and what the public perception is. So then we talk about projects of opportunity. So again, it's not a project-based plan. We've got a recommended investment choice. But we do want to acknowledge that there are some projects that are of great priority for the region. And so as we thought about that list, we said, okay, well, what was in there before? And that's still relevant. Back in 2020, are those projects still relevant now? Maybe some of them have already been completed. Is there anything necessary to address those adopted performance? As I mentioned, the region is doing very well, so there are very few things that needed to be added to be able to address those. And again, what is necessary to address regional priorities? So thinking about the larger needs of the region and connectivity within the region, but also to communities adjacent to Sun Corridor MPO region. And then finally, as I mentioned, what do we need to include that could possibly be a future grant opportunity? And that's something that's maybe a little bit different with the IAGA funding that's coming out through the federal government. There's a variety of different grant programs that weren't in full existence back in 2020. And for many of those grants, they will very specifically ask, is this project identified in adopted regional plan? So if we call that out, that's a quick way to check a box, to say, yes, it has been identified. So I'm just going to give you an example. I think in your packet, there was a big, multi-page list of projects of opportunity that were identified. But this is just an example of some of those kind of more regional ones and things that are sort of elevated to regional importance and then a couple that we're going to highlight here that have a little bit more local importance. So of course, the East-West Corridor, this was previously identified in a 2015 Design Concept Report. It extends from SR347 in Maricopa all the way over to I-10. It was identified as a regional priority and the county act actually is about to embark on a slightly more detailed definition of that corridor. I think they're probably going to be kicking off another phase of the study in the next couple of months. Of course, the North-South Corridor, the 2021 Tier One EIS, they're now progressing to the various Phase Two for different segments of the project. We've got Interstate 11, the preferred alternative was identified in a 2021 Environmental Impact Statement. I-10 widening, they completed that DCR and environmental assessment in 2023. And I believe they've started design on portions of the corridor and they're still looking for additional funding. ADOT is applying for grants to try to get some additional monies for that corridor as well. The Phoenix-Tucson Passenger Rail, 2016, Tier One EIS was completed. Again, something to keep in mind, remembering this is not just a roadway plan and the importance that rail could have for the region. The Central Arizona Parkway, this is a corridor that has been recently studied by Pinnell County. It would start just north or in the vicinity of Arizona Farms Road and then head north, running east of the North-South Corridor. And then, of course, here locally, we've got the roadway improvement in the area of Proctor and Gamble. And then in the vicinity, Hauser Road improvements between 11 Mile Corner Road and La Palma Road. So right now, the phase of the project, if any was interested, I mentioned there's a comprehensive list that I believe was included in your packet. We have been working with staff to make sure that we have all of the priorities that would be important to Coolidge. So if you look at it and you think there's something that's missing, certainly let us know. We're going to be looking to finalize the RIC and that list of project of opportunity as we finalize the draft plan. We need to go through a public comment period before the plan itself is adopted by the Sun Corridor MPO Technical Advisory Committee and the Sun Corridor MPO Executive Board. And that needs to happen prior to March of 2024. And with that, I guess I'll just open it up. If there's anything you think that we've missed or any questions or comments you have for me, I'd be happy to try to address.
Oh, Amy, thank you. I see they did change the North-South to number 44 or something.
I had heard that, yes, I had heard that.
Yeah, whoever numbers the freeway, what?
It's 505.
Okay, well, I know they changed it.
Because I think I asked them, well, what happened to 404?
Yeah. Yeah, there was a four, but now it's a five. Oh, okay, it's changed again. So, but the bottom line is, is no more North-South, huh?
Well, I haven't heard that they are officially changing the name of the studies that they're doing. I think it's just that the State Transportation Board or a county committee at ADOT has somehow designated that future route number.
It's the same thing, though.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's okay if you want to keep calling it the North-South.
No, but I mean, yeah, I was going to say, it's the same route. They haven't moved the land that's been dedicated for it.
Exactly.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
No, sir. I'll just make one comment, Mayor. I am really excited to see this, specifically Phoenix-Tucson Passenger Rail being highlighted here. I think when this was kind of talked about over the past couple of years, people think we're just focusing on Phoenix and Tucson, and it's good to see that Coolidge will be highlighted as well as a potential stop.
Yeah, we've been fighting for that rail for a long time. I think we're still the preferred route by ADOT. So we will have a stop here, hopefully. Thanks, Eric. Right, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I know locally, there's a lot of people that express tremendous concern about the Skalston Road lighting intersection, the signalization of that road. And I know in the area, we have tremendous problems with our intersections that don't have the turn lanes. From a safety standpoint, people get in rear end and forced into somebody else, head-on collisions. How does that relate to this plan, some of those safety aspects?
Well, as I mentioned, there's a couple of things to think about as it comes to this plan. Certainly, we have a recommended allocation of funding for modernization projects, which would be safety projects. If there's something that comes to light, there is sort of an application process that one goes through to submit those projects for, potentially for selection for funding. There's also great opportunities. Sun Corridor MPO has always been exceptionally supportive of those ADOT HSIP grants, which is a great funding source for those types of projects. But certainly, if there's a specific location that you want to provide to me to add to that list of projects of opportunity, we're happy to do that.
I think, first of all, I think kudos to Sun Corridor and the help that Irene and Sun Corridor gives us on these. Just for the benefit of the public, I think that the signalization project is well underway. A lot of people don't know that, but I know that there have been some issues that have kind of caused some delays there with respect to irrigation districts that have caused some delays. I think the public should know that they are working on those issues.
Excellent.
Yeah, I think, when did they say it was going to go out for a bit or maybe?
It was supposed to go out for May of December. I experienced some paperwork issues, so they're saying that they're going to start construction in fall.
Mayor and Council, so there's an intergovernment agreement that has for the million dollars that they received, congressional hollerings, that money has to be transferred to ADOT and that agreement is underway and that's kind of what's holding up the project as of right now. So all the funding has to be secured and in place for them to be able to advertise the project. So they're shooting to advertise it this summer and hopefully begin construction this fall.
Okay. It just, it goes on and on and on. I mean, we can continue to hear from our citizens, they're very unhappy. And ADOT just keeps kicking the can down the road, although it's not all their fault this time. I will say that. But, oh, Hollering got that money quite some time ago. How come it's taken so long to transfer it? They don't have any problem transferring money to other countries.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I have no control over that, but I believe it. They have to wait till they secure from the USDOT and then be able to transfer the funding over to ADOT then.
So it's only an internal problem?
It's somewhere, I'm not quite sure.
Okay, thank you.
And as far as Rick's comment about SR87, you know, I am working on an SR87 profile corridor study, actually received a letter from Governor Lewis today supporting an SR87 corridor study, which would look at the future of that, starting from I-10 all the way through Coolidge, all the way up to 587. And so I will be submitting that request to ADOT to pursue that study. So I'm hopeful that they will support that.
Good, yeah. The traffic's getting pretty, I mean, it's bumper-to-bumper sometimes out there. It's ridiculous now.
I agree.
Okay, well, thank you. You guys are doing a good job.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
We appreciate it. I know you guys are going to sneak out, so we're not going to close our eyes, just go ahead and. Ben does it to us all the time. Okay, move to item four, presentation by Desert City Community Health Center. Welcome, Dr. Dan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Dan Barbara. I'm the CEO, excuse me, of Desert City Community Health Center. And we wanted to, this presentation is by way of information and also an opportunity to discuss and hear from you and your constituents regarding what the needs of the City of Coolidge are, but at invitation and with much appreciation for the encouragement of the city, of Mayor Thompson, of the city manager, Mr. Miller, and others, as well as the support of the Community Development Department and the Chamber of Commerce. We have taken a really solid look at the needs of the City of Coolidge, the community, the residents, and came to the strong conclusion that this is a wonderful opportunity for us to come and provide healthcare services, comprehensive healthcare services in the City of Coolidge to your residents and to open and operate a community clinic, as well as a community pharmacy in the community. So let me give you a little bit So let me give you a little bit of a background about us. The, the first slide will, am I far away? So Desert Sunita Community Health Center is an existing federally qualified health center, or FQHC. Our first primary clinic location has been in Ajo, Arizona, of course, a small community for those of you who are not really familiar with it, southern Arizona, on the way to Puerto Penasco, about eighty miles north of that in Arizona. And the clinic has been in operation in various iterations in 1986, so we know how to do healthcare, we know how to do rural healthcare, we know how to do comprehensive healthcare in some of the most challenging environments extremely well. I brought some of our key staff here today, I appreciate their coming out in the evening, and it's quite a, quite a little of a distance for them, so I appreciate that very much. But one of my, my staff, Cesar Carradines, is our chief operations officer. Also with us tonight is Dr. Jared Hatchard, my director of pharmacy, Emily Pogue, our director of nursing, and new to us is Brittany Armus, is our, our outreach coordinator. So the community will hear from her a lot as we provide information and, and accept input. But the intent of Desert Sunita is to provide quality, local, and affordable healthcare. That is our tagline and has been for some time, to fill in the gap in services that are available in terms of direct, responsive outpatient care in the Coolidge community. So just a little bit about us, I don't think that this is working, but I'll try it and I'll just come back over here. Desert Sunita Community Health Center is a, in Ajo and in Arizona City, and the next slide is Arizona City, presently operates primary care medicine clinic, full comprehensive outpatient, primary care medicine clinic. We have several providers in Ajo, several providers in Arizona City, and will plan to have several providers, three primary care medicine providers in, in Coolidge as well. We have a community pharmacy. We also have, which is really second to none in terms of community health centers in Arizona, a clinical pharmacy program, which is a practicing clinical pharmacist, board-certified clinical pharmacist, that serves as a medication expert and specialist, that blends the scientist, the physician-scientist model with community medicine in a really epic way, especially supporting the work of chronic disease management, complex disease management in the population, something that is, that's really cutting-edge and important to us, that, so we launched it. Frankly, those types of things are not moneymakers. We launch them and we do them because they're the best medicine, and that is who we are. We, we invest in providing high-quality care and services. We're a true born nonprofit, rural-centered, focused nonprofit. We also provide outpatient behavioral healthcare services, both mental health treatment services and substance abuse treatment services. We provide psychiatry, primarily it's through telehealth, but it's readily available. We have a psychiatric mental health nurse practitioner, as well as a geriatric psychiatrist. We provide physical therapy in Ajo and dentistry in Ajo, and those are in the future in all of our new locations, including here in Coolidge, and laboratory in suite, as well as x-ray imaging in suite. The same thing is our, our existing clinic in Arizona City, where we provide primary care medicine and, and all of these other ancillary services that I, that I mentioned, or supportive services that I mentioned, pharmacy, community pharmacy, and clinical pharmacy, behavioral health, psychiatry, laboratory, and x-ray, we don't yet have in, in Arizona City, but it'll be coming to Arizona City about the same time that it comes to the clinic in Coolidge. So here's some of our providers in Arizona City, a couple of which will also be coming up to Coolidge in support of the new operations here, and we have brought on a physician, I should say, we have offered a position, and we believe we're gonna get there, with a physician who will be a, a long, is a longstanding central Arizona practicing family physician, who came extremely well-recommended. But we also have some, some excellent nurse practitioners, mid-level providers. We expect that there will be two physicians serving in Coolidge and a mid-level provider, a graduate, postgraduate level nurse practitioner. In Arizona City, these are some of our providers, including our, our nurse practitioners, as well as Dr. Hatchard in pharmacy. We have several others as well, and Dr. Basra is a family practice physician, will be joining our chief medical officer in April or May of this next year. The providers in Arizona City also include mental health providers at the graduate level. The, these individuals are serving in our clinic and will serve in support of operations here in Coolidge, but will be adding to the cadre of professionals as well. We actually have open recruitment currently. One of our missions, something that we do that's very unique in Arizona, is not unique across the country, is not special in the world of FQHCs, but it's very special in Arizona, is wherever we go, we launch a full-scale effort to provide high-quality behavioral health services and preventive care services in the schools. And so we are doing so in Arizona City, we're doing so in Stanfield, actually, and we would like to do so here in Coolidge as well, both behavioral health services, as well as preventive health services, and in some cases, full clinics in the school setting. So our plan is to, our plan to provide high-quality, accessible, and affordable care to the residents of Coolidge is laid out here. So outpatient services beginning in March of 2024. The location, we have leased, currently under design, it'll soon be under construction. The tenant improvements is a relatively temporary location, it's a five-year plan, but the clinic location will be in the Safeway Plaza, 1435 North Arizona Boulevard. It's, we've taken two large suites there. It'll be ten to twelve provider, provider of rooms with, as I say, three to four providers in the building, medical providers, and all of those other ancillary services. Unfortunately, because of the co-location with Safeway, we can't put pharmacy in the same building. It's kind of unfair to Safeway, kind of would be unfair to us, too. So we have another location planned that we're at the very final stage of negotiation with the awesome gentleman who bought the beautiful old retail space at 305 South Arizona Boulevard. It's a gorgeous brick building, and we want to turn that into a true community pharmacy. Again, something else that is really rare in Arizona. If you are old enough, or if you have watched any of the wonderful shows, the, from the 1960s era, 1950s America, or if you have visited some places in my family's home, my dad's side's home country of Mexico, you'll see that community pharmacy is a huge and important phenomenon in some places in the eastern United States and in other countries. We want that to be something that's restored here in Coolidge. It was the case throughout the, the middle part of this century, that your pharmacy was your central hub of care in the community, and you met with your pharmacist, you talked with, we want that restored. So the part of doing that is making it attractive to do so, and that building just screams old-fashioned pharmacy and ice cream parlor, and so that's what we're gonna turn it into. It, it makes it a pleasant experience, not a pleasant experience, it makes it an enjoyable experience to go and meet with your pharmacist, and that's, that's what we're looking for. The clinic in, in the Safeway Plaza will be open from eight to seven, Monday through Friday. We will accept walk-ins and medicine. We do that in our other clinics now, recently. Primary care medicine, three physicians and our graduate, postgraduate trained nurse practitioners. Some of, some of the folks that come to us have really exceptional experience in particular areas, and we look for that, folks who are, are experts in, in chronic diseases, infection control, infectious diseases, diabetes, and women's health. But it'll be primary care, women's health, and general family practice, all ages, with specialty services for chronic disease management, as well as laboratory draws, lab draws on site, behavioral healthcare, comprehensive assessment, diagnosis, treatment, and medication therapy, our psychiatry, and then, of course, clinical pharmacy, which is blended into all of it. The community-based services will begin in about fall of 2024. Frankly, it's gonna take us a little bit of time to build that out, but that, that pharmacy will be available at that historic location come fall of 2024, as well as hopefully, given our opportunity to meet and discuss these things with the schools, the various schools, school-based behavioral health and other clinical services in 2024. Visiting specialty services, wellness services, x-ray and other imaging will be also available as well. Our five-year plan is to develop a comprehensive, large-scale FQHC, second to none, scaled and designed to meet the needs of Coolidge in the Coolidge community. Do we know exactly where yet? No, we've been given some great ideas, and we'd love to hear more about them and explore those options. We are looking at grant funding, we are looking at capital, but whatever we, whatever we make in a community in terms of the, the additional revenues is always reinvested in the community. So that is the true nature of a nonprofit, and that is the intent, is we want to come here and establish solid medical care and then reinvest the revenue from that in the building of a comprehensive outpatient, community-based health center, which would include all of the bells and whistles, and space for specialty providers to co-locate with the facility. A community pharmacy would remain in the historic location, because that is a super cool and attractive thing to do, but it would also have a durable medical equipment-focused and long-term care-focused pharmacy at the community health center as well, on, on the same campus. So these are some flyers, both in English and in Spanish, and all of our providers that we recruit, we recruit for bilingual providers, English, Spanish. It is difficult sometimes to find Spanish-speaking providers, especially native Spanish-speaking providers. The evidence says that people who go to see, to find a healthcare provider, they prefer to be able to talk to their provider in, in their own language. I have a story that I tell, I'll share sometime with the community about my grandmother and her own experiences with that, and what it meant for her, three-year battle with challenges. But long story short is, it's not always possible, but it is something that we actively recruit for, so we're working on that. I'll take any questions, and, but with respect to your time, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, of course, any questions that would be available, that's it.
Well, Dr. Dan, we've already had a conversation, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna open it up for the council, have any questions turning down here, you have any questions?
Well, I do want to say that, I mean, this is really needed here in the community. I mean, it's, it's something that, I mean, growing up here, we had, you know, several doctors, several practices and everything else, and then it got to the point where, you know, we had one that he retired. So I want to thank you for thinking of the Coolidge community and bringing this to us. I think it's gonna, it should be well-received, so thank you.
Absolutely.
I think it's a great concept. I don't, I don't have any questions, but welcome.
Thank you.
Just one comment. First of all, thank you for coming and presenting. I think with the aspect of approaching the schools, I really, I know we can't speak for the schools, but I think it's a good concept and a good idea. I know there's a real need for taking care of our youth and their mental health and all that, so other than that, it's good to see.
Well, I have talked to somebody at the school, and they have told me they can't find anybody even to do physicals for their potential athletes, so there's a big, there's a big need here. We continue to grow, our population's almost 18,000, and I even noticed that we're, we're not losing, we're gaining more than we're losing on the, on the sign-ups for sewer. So I think it's gonna be, even if it slows down, we're still gonna get big. So we need, we need medical facilities, and, and this is what we've been looking for. In the past, we've done surveys, and roads were big, but we needed service providers, and this is a big step for us, so thank you and welcome, and it can't come soon enough, so we need somebody to go over there and tear down some walls or something. We're good at tearing it down. Putting it back is a different story, but we, you know, we'll find somebody to do it. So welcome and thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council members. Appreciate it.
Thanks a lot. Okay. We'll move to number five, monthly report by the Coolidge Chamber of Commerce. Good evening, Lynn.
Good evening, Mayor. Good night. Good night, people. So.
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay. So reinvestments for September and new members was, we had a total of 21 reinvestments, Air Repair Inc., Cooper's Barbecue Company, Country K9 Grooming, PSV Trucking Corp., Dairy Queen, Walton Orthodontics, Hospice Compass, Oakwood Homes, Sue &amp; Phil Bacon, Ho-Ho Comm RV and Mobile Village, Verano, Desert Providers Medical Supply, Cabot, Pinau County Federal Credit Union, Absolute, HCBS, Banner Castle Grand Medical Center, First Baptist Church, Spirit of Joy, United Methodist Church, Stinger Bridge and Iron, Kiva Insurance, Arizona at Work. And new members, we have State Representative Keith Seaman, Legacy Rock Products, Zen Business, MH Notary Services, Adam Company Realty, Executive Arizona Territory. So for our stats for September, we had 270 local visitors, 27 in-state visitors, 20 out-of-state, total of 1,439 referrals, year-to-date, 3,303 visitors. Castle Grand Ruins for September was 5,202, year-to-date, 91,799. Pretty awesome. Pinau Jim and Mineral Museum, they had 173 visitors in September, so year-to-date, they're at 1,176. So the cool things that's been happening, the Walmart ribbon-cutting, I, I was sick, I didn't get to go, but it, my team was really great, and it was a great event, I heard. Veterans Parade went really well, pretty awesome to see you in the Nicola Truck, Mayor. Borderlands Powwow, we just had this last weekend with the rain. We did over 225 units, which is about 15, it's over 15,700 pounds of produce, so it was a good day. One thing I'm really excited about, we're just finishing up the grant that we got from Office of Tourism, and we got to put the buses, the cart buses have advertising on it for the region, so we're really excited about that, that's working well. And we're working up, finishing up our 2024 directory. Some upcoming events, PSV CDL Training Trucking, they're gonna have their ribbon-cutting on November 30th. I, I think I'm really extremely proud of this company. We've been sending a lot of people out of our county to do CDL training, and there's such a demand for it, now we have it in our county. Very proud of that. Airport Fly-In, December 2nd, 2023. City of Coolidge 2035 General Plan Water Resource is December 6th. Next Powwow is December 16th, and Pinau Geology Museum Rock Book Giveaway will be January Any questions?
Yeah, Lynn, where's that ribbon-cutting gonna be, at CAC?
Yeah, and they're gonna have the trucks in the baseball parking lot.
Okay.
So there'll be food, and it's gonna be a big deal. I think you're speaking about it.
Oh, thanks for letting me know.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. That's 11:30?
Uh, it is.
The date, yeah, November 30?
I'll, I'll send you a, to give you more details on the, where it's at.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Any questions for Lynn?
No.
All right, thank you, Lynn, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving to call the public. This is a portion of the meeting that if you have anything to, you address the council, you can come up and state your name and your address, and you have up to three minutes to discuss it with us, if you so desire. I would ask, though, if it, if it, if it is in relation to items 13, 14, 15, or 16 on the agenda, please wait till those items come forward. Thank, okay. Seeing nobody rush towards the podium, we're gonna move out and call the public, move into business items for consent. I would ask now if there's anybody on the council, what's any of these items pulled for individual?
Mayor Thompson, I'd like to pull 11. I just got a couple of quick questions.
Okay, anybody else?
Can I pull number seven, please?
Okay. All right. of Coolidge Avenue, and authorizing the mayor to sign the necessary documents. Item nine. Consider approval of entering into a cooperative purchasing agreement with Western Emulsion on Penale County Contract, two-four-zero-three-two-eight-I-F-B, to fog seal city roads and releasing CIP funds for the FY twenty-three-twenty-four work, street work program. Item ten. Consider approval to unfreeze the capital budget to purchase one mower from Brigham Equipment Company in the amount of fifteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents for the Parks Department. And item twelve. Consider approval of the claims for the month of October, 2023. If there are no questions or comments regarding those items, I would look for a motion to act.
Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I make a motion, we approve consent agenda items six, eight, nine, ten, and twelve as read.
Second.
Okay, Norma, choose your second. There's a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item seven. Consider approval of appointing Tom Scott and Deborah Mayers to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission for two-year terms. Okay. Councilmember Daniels?
Yeah, I don't really have any questions. I just wanted to take the time to thank our two applicants, Tom I see here tonight, and I don't think Deborah's here tonight, but thank them for their commitment in joining this commission. I think it's a really good opportunity for us to kind of get some new people on the commission. That's it. Just wanted to highlight them.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? If there's nothing else, I need a motion to act.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item seven. Consider approval of appointing Tom Scott and Deborah Mayers to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission for two-year terms. Okay. Councilmember Daniels?
Yeah, I don't really have any questions. I just wanted to take the time to thank our two applicants, Tom I see here tonight, and I don't think Deborah's here tonight, but thank them for their commitment in joining this commission. I think it's a really good opportunity for us to kind of get some new people on the commission. That's it. Just wanted to highlight them.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? If there's nothing else, I need a motion to act.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item eleven. Consider approval of accepting the scope of services for an amount not to exceed sixty-thousand dollars, and the authorization for services of Task Order Number One with Kimberly Horn to prepare a complete grant application for submission by the city to the Rebuilding America Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity, a RACE, See Attachment A for Projects Copas Services. This is for a RACE grant.
Mayor, council? I'm here to answer any question.
Yes. James, I just got a couple of questions. When I looked at the project description, it says, "We construct paved roadway of Aviation Avenue, place aging undersized cattle guard and entrance, and then also the paving of two-point-eight miles." I know that I probably should know this as much time as I spend out there, but Aviation Avenue, where does that begin and end?
It starts at our cattle guard.
At the cattle guard.
And it loops around.
Oh, yeah, because that-
Basically, it's covering every paved road that's already paved, and all the dirt roads.
Okay.
It'll reduce, you know, Public Works is out there grading and water trucks, and, you know, it'll reduce dust, maintenance, and they're just terrible. Roads are terrible, they're too narrow. People are having to drive off in the bar ditches, you know, when they pass. And this grant's, it's a real complex grant, you know, so it takes a cost-benefit analysis, a feasibility study, you know, there's a lot that go to this package. So if we start now, we'll make the February submission.
Okay. Yeah, and so, yeah, because that was one of the things, because I know that road that, you know, kind of winds around, that thing, boy, I'll tell you, there's sometimes, there's a big enough truck coming from the other direction, you're off the road.
Yeah, you're off the road. Ben had his guys grade the sides, you know, the shoulders and rot it up, and that's really helping us, you know.
Right.
But it's just a temporary fix, you know, we need to-
And how much is-
Out there is our roads.
Yeah. How much is the grant, total grant that we're looking at?
Well, when it's all said and done, between four and six million. That depends on the feasibility study when it comes in. This grant, you know, this'll, you know, it'll do a number of things. This Task Order, it'll provide a cost-benefit analysis to see if the benefits are gonna, you know, outweigh the costs, and if it's all feasible, you know, for the airport, for surrounding community, for job creation, a safety, you know, there's a lot of things that go into this. So once we make the application, you're gonna see another, Task Order Two coming online, and that'll be the environmentals and the engineering, and that we're gonna, that we'll have to do also. But if we get the grant, it'll cover all these costs. We did the same thing, I don't know, five years ago, six, seven years ago with the runway. It's a gamble, you know, we're putting some money out to, you know, but the benefit far outweighs the cost, you know, if we do get it. And I'm confident we'll get it, you know.
So you're pretty confident, that was gonna be my next question, how confident we're gonna get it?
It's nerve-wracking.
So all or some of it?
Yeah, we've done it before, and we were always successful.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I do have one, I have two. One, I know you can answer. This is gonna include the road that goes to the Complete Parachute Solutions, they're gonna pave that?
All the way around, yep.
Oh, okay. Well, that'll be a good deal. And they won't hold it against us, that we've already received quite a bit of money on that grant, the one we just did for the runway?
Oh, no, it's a totally separate agency, you know, this isn't to the FAA, so this doesn't cut into our entitlements, our bill money. It's totally separate. This is the RACE grant. It's more for, you know, communities that qualify. There's some qualifications you have to, you know, to meet, and our city and our airport meets these qualifications. So it's a totally separate agency that we're applying to. It's very competitive, so, too.
Okay, Lynn, that's why we need these guys.
And they have the expertise in doing it.
That's what I mean, because there's somebody else, some other community that hired somebody to do them, too, so. Is any other questions?
No, sir.
Well, Mayor, with that, I'd like to go ahead and move to approve consent agenda item eleven.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, James. Okay, we'll move into business under regular items. Item thirteen. Consider amending approval to unfreeze Capital Sales Tax Fund for the purpose of ordering eight budgeted vehicles from preferred vendor Garrett Motors, or a secondary vendor, with availability for an amount not to exceed three-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand, and utilizing capital sales tax and/or enterprise funds, waiving sealed bid requirements, and allowing the mayor to sign the necessary documents.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this should look pretty familiar to you.
Hey, Councilmember Hudson, has anybody declared conflict?
Oh. What's that?
I thought you were moving forward to declare your conflict on this item. Well, it's already been approved in the budget and everything, this is just coming back, and I'll abstain from voting on this.
So, good evening. So you guys have seen this before. This was brought to you previously a few sessions ago. We were working with our local dealer, Garrett Motors, to procure eight vehicles for various departments throughout the city. Due to the GMC, or the Chevy strike, they're only able to get twenty-five percent of the ordered vehicles out in this region. So Garrett Motors was only able to procure one vehicle, and then they were able to get two used vehicles that the city was able to get. What we're asking for this evening is basically to go out to other entities to get the vehicles where we can, to stay within our budget, is what we're looking to do. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So there's a time limit? We have to spend that money during this budget cycle, right?
Yeah, so we're looking to spend the money during this budget cycle. Like I say, we've been working with Garrett Motors, we've reached out to multiple entities, seeing that if maybe a dealer trade could be made so that Garretts could procure the vehicles, and we could still purchase through them to keep taxes and revenue inside the city, but just due to the way that the deals are made and how inventory is run, the dealerships will not actually work with our local dealer to give them the vehicles for themselves.
The vehicles are allocated because of the shortage of chips and everything still, shortage of inventories, shortage of production. So they have, the first wave has already been gone, and we had secured vehicles from other entities. So the second wave came, of course, the strike came, and the strike lasted six weeks. It was ten thousand orders submitted by the western region, and that is Arizona, New Mexico, California, Utah. And out of the ten thousand, General Motors approved twenty-five hundred. So as a dealer our size, we didn't even get twenty-five percent of what we submitted to get, which would have been two-and-a-half units, so. They did give us one, by the grace of their heart. And so Ben and Jeremy and I have been talking and everything, and we tried to secure them at different dealers, but when you have, when you have the inventory, and you know that they're gonna come to you, you're not gonna give that inventory up. So anyways, we did secure two used vehicles for them, and saved the city about twelve-thousand dollars, I think it was. And then we did order one new one for them, but I talked to them, and I said that we need to go out and give as many vehicles as we can from other dealers, so we can fill the needs of our departments.
So currently, I'd added a quote on top of this, and it's from Courtesy Chevrolet. They have a twenty-five hundred in stock with a fleet bed on it. We can actually take that bed that's on that truck and put it onto one of the long beds that we got through Garrett Motors, because that's gonna be one of our facilities vehicles. And then we can put the dump bed, that's gonna go on the twenty-five, so it can be a dump truck for the street department.
Was the bed included in the bid or not? Because there's notes on there that say bed or no bed, or-
Yeah, so the twenty-five hundred that's coming from Courtesy Chevrolet, that was the very top bid, that is including the bed that's on the truck. It's on the truck.
Okay. I was just curious, because all the, they look, a lot of the prices look pretty similar anyway, but, but the bottom line is, is if we want to get it done, and we want to get the vehicles into service here, the only way we're gonna get them is to go somewhere else.
We're gonna have to go somewhere else. I'm kind of hoping that maybe things lighten up. We've been doing some shopping, seeing if we can get something that'll work, that's still within our budget, that's gonna work. I'm kind of hoping that maybe if we get into the third quarter, if we have to put it off, then people who've made orders, maybe they've backed off and said, you know what? We don't want this. That's how we were able to procure the three Tahos, the beginning of this fiscal year, was because they were ordered for another entity, and they decided they didn't want them, and so I'm hoping we might be able to get lucky like that again, and scoop up some of these vehicles.
And there might be more inventory opened up after December, because these vehicles that have been allocated to these other dealers, just like you said, Ben, they might come, and they might have a shortfall of income for those entities, so they might become available and could possibly fill some of those that we might not be able to get. So it's very fluid, it's just, it's doggy-dog right now with every manufacturer, and it's a tough world out there right now, and so.
Well, you know, nobody wants to keep our Coolidge dollars local more than I do. I'm sure everybody up here does, but it comes between that, and if there's a need, then we need to get them, and if we can't get them here, I guess we're gonna have to get them where we can get them, so.
Agreed.
Okay. Does there, anybody have any questions, comments? Everybody understands what's going on? All right, then I need a motion to act, or?
Mayor, move to approve item number thirteen.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in the second, and Councilmember Hudson's not, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I carries. Thank you, man.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Item fourteen. Thanks, Jeremy. Resolution number twenty-three-sixteen. A resolution of the Mayor and the City Council of City Coolidge, Arizona, finding certain facts and adopting a major amendment to the 2025 General Plan for the City of Coolidge, Arizona, to change the general plan, land designation from a pad urban neighborhood, three-hundred-and-twenty-five acres, and rural ranchette, five acres, to two-hundred-and-sixty acres of industrial and manufacturing, sixty-five acres to business and commerce, and five acres to urban neighborhood, on approximately three-hundred-and-thirty acres of land, more or less, described as portions of Section Four and Section Five, Township Six South, Range Eight East, of the Healan-Saw River Basin, Meridian, Penale County, Arizona. Gilbert?
Mayor Thompson, Vice Mayor Henry, council members. If you recall, we had public hearings on these three amendments on November thirteenth, and so the public hearings are over, and now this is the, these are the resolutions. This one is for Brighton Amendment, which is, as the mayor talked about, changes from urban neighborhood to some industrial manufacturing. And this is Catty Corner to Stinger, so it's on the northwest corner of State Highway eighty-seven and Randolph, west of Highway eighty-seven, so it'll give us opportunities in the future to rezone for more industrial manufacturing in that area. So it must, we're seeing that there's a lot of need for that, so we're supporting this resolution. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
This has already gone through P&amp;Z, Gilbert?
Yes, Mayor.
And they did approve, they were in favor of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, then I'll need a-
Mayor Thompson, I move to approve Resolution number twenty-three-sixteen.
Yep.
Second.
Okay. It's a resolution, so she's gotta, there you go.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Murita?
Yeah.
Councilmember Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Bagnall?
Yes.
Councilmember Savidra?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
And Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item fifteen. Resolution number twenty-three-dish-seventeen. A resolution of the Mayor and the City Council of City Coolidge, Arizona, finding certain facts and adopting a major amendment to the 2025 General Plan for the City of Coolidge, Arizona, to change the general plan, land designation, from rural ranchette to industrial and manufacturing, on approximately nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven-point-six gross acres of land, more or less, described as portions of Sections fourteen and Section Twenty-three, Township Seven South, Range Eight East, of the Healan-Saw River Basin, Meridian, Penale County, Arizona. Cal, Gilbert?
Mayor Thompson, Vice Mayor Henry, council members. As you recall, this is the property that's directly east of IPAS, so all the landowners in that area, there's about twenty-six or a little more in different parcels, and they've expressed an interest to go to industrial manufacturing, once that property's in the city. So all this is doing is changing our general plan from rural ranchette to industrial manufacturing. And in the county, it was, it is actually residential. There's no allocation of water out there or anything for something like that, so it's not gonna be developed for anything residential. And this is just a general plan, so if it goes over into another general plan, that happens, because what it does on the south, it'll give the eighty acres that's there the opportunity, if they so choose in the future, to ask us to annex them into the city, into our city, and, because we have services available for that whole area, from Global Water and APS, and also Skip. So that's why we've left it intact, and P&amp;Z approved this the way it is. And I don't know, say, Manager Miller has any other comments on this?
Mr. Mayor, just the only thing, I think what Gilbert's saying is this is the item that Mayor Micah Powell came and expressed his concerns about. Talked to Mayor Powell today again, told him of our planning commission's recommendation on this property. This does not affect zoning of the property, it is just a general plan, land use policy change, allowing the city to designate this property as manufacturing and industrial. The City of Eloy has this in their planning area boundary, eighty acres of it, south of the canal, and my understanding in talking to Mayor Powell today is they've designated that eighty acres as residential. Again, this doesn't affect annexation, this doesn't do anything other than put colors on a land use policy figure. They have it, we have it, there's a little overlap on eighty acres, and our recommendation is you proceed with the general plan, major amendment, as presented and approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And it's not unusual for some of these plans to overlap?
even a slight overlap between us and Casa Grande. Not uncommon. I haven't studied the entire state, but in our region, there is some overlap. It has been, sometimes it gets a little controversial, annexation especially, you know, if we're going into somebody else's planning area boundary and annexing. But annexation is really dependent on where the property owner wants to be annexed. We're not out there actively asking people to annex their lands into the city and generally responding to those requests, not actually out there trying to annex.
Okay. Any comments?
No further discussion. Mayor, I make a motion we approve resolution twenty-three dash seventeen as read.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in the second, Norma.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Saavedra?
Yes.
Councilmember Bagnall?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Murrieta?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
And Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item sixteen, resolution number twenty-three dash eighteen, a resolution of the mayor and the City Council of the City of Coolidge, Arizona, finding certain facts and adopting a major amendment to the twenty-twenty-five general plan for the City of Coolidge, Arizona, to change the general plan land designation from rural ranchette to urban neighborhood on approximately thirty-one acres of land, more or less, described as a portion of Section Eight Township Six, Eight East of the Hela and Salt River Basin, Meridian, Pinal County, Arizona.
Mayor Thompson, Vice Mayor Henry, council members. This is another one that we heard had a public hearing on on November thirteenth, and this one is directly west of Twilight Trails. And to make it clear, this, this is strictly a general plan change. It doesn't rezone anything. It's not in the city yet. It's still subject to annexation. So there's a lot of steps that have to happen before anything is done there. This is the first step, and all this does, it changes it from rural ranchette to urban neighborhood, which is our most common prevalent zoning, or actually amendment to general plan over most of the city, giving example of what urban neighborhood allows. It allows single-family residential, R1, single-family residential, R2, multifamily, R3, and R4, mobile home, R5, R6, neighborhood business, C1, all the C2, C3, commercial office, and planned area development. So those are all allowed under urban neighborhood. So all you're doing at this point, if you change it, is, and prove it, is to allow any of those uses to come forward if they so choose, and go through the process to get approved through the Planning and Zoning Commission yourselves. So all this does is just allows that opportunity on the general plan, and it matches all, everything around it in the city that's there already. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions?
Mr. Lopez, I went to the general plan, and I'm looking at urban neighborhood, and it's a little bit confusing, what, the way that reads in there. It says, citywide net target density for the land used category shall be four-point-oh dwellings per units per acre. Developments on sites greater than one-hundred-and-sixty acres shall provide a minimum of ten percent total gross acreage, and then we go, development on sites greater than one-hundred-and-sixty acres may include up to twelve-point-five percent, and densities up to sixteen dwelling units per acre. And it goes on, it says, and then it says between forty and one-hundred-and-sixty. Well, this is thirty-one. So where do we fall in this particular category?
So is this on the, are you looking at the?
General plan.
Of the, oh, the general plan, so?
Yeah. I, this kind of confused me when I was reading through it. I-
I think I can, I think I can address that if I may, Mr. Mayor. You know, the general plan sets forth some, some basic standards for development. If a developer came in with a planned area development that was within those acreages, generally, they're gonna be asking for a mixed-use type of development that allows for higher density. PADs generally allow for higher density than you would with a conventional zoning district like R1, for instance.
Okay.
And I think all that is simply saying is that if you come in with a PAD and you're in these acreage areas, the more acreage you have, the little higher density you can get, because you're probably gonna have some multifamily in it. The smaller the acreage, you're probably not gonna have as much room for the multifamily. You probably, your density's gonna be a little less. That's all it is, is just a, kind of showing some ratios of densities that are allowed. As Mr. Lopez pointed out, the urban ranch neighborhood, this, or this neighborhood, urban neighborhood land use classification will allow all these different residential zoning districts within it. Later, if someone come in and wanted to rezone this for very small lots or large lots, large lot residential, five acres, they could. If they want to come in and do four units to the acre, which is very similar, probably to the Twilight Trails, because that's pretty dense, it may even be more than four, four dwellings to the acre there, they could do that as well. Subject to the Planning Commission and council reviewing that rezoning request, going through the public hearing process and getting approval.
Right. Okay, so it all has to go through the same process, even though if we approve, this is approved tonight, it still has to go back through the whole rezoning process and everything?
Correct.
At that time, okay.
And on this particular property, it even goes a little further. This property's not in the city. You can't consider the zoning until it's annexed.
Right.
In all probability, the landowner here would ask for a development agreement, is my guess. You'd have to consider that first. If they decide not to annex, then they go and deal with the county on zoning, because it's still in the county.
Okay.
And these are just guidelines to, I see the part you're talking about, Phil gave me the, and it has different scenarios, as the city manager says, so it's between forty and one-sixty, then you can do that. Fits under another category, so as you run through this, we do that. When you look at, if somebody wants to do something, we go, we pull this out and see where it fits, and that's where it can potentially go.
Sure.
So that's how we do that.
Okay.
Hope that helps.
Yeah, does. Thank you.
Good, you're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, if there's nothing else, I need a motion to act.
Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I make a motion we approve the resolution number twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, Norma.
Okay. Councilmember Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Murrieta?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Saavedra?
Yes.
Councilmember Bagnall?
Yes.
And Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move into report from the mayor, council, and city manager. Start down here with Councilmember Bagnall.
Oh, I just want to thank everybody in the community that came out and assisted with the Thanksgiving meal down at the American Legion. We served, I think, a little over two-hundred-and-fifty meals down there that day. Everything, it was a collective effort between the ladies at the Nazarene Church brought all the desserts, and then the V F and American Legion all joined together in helping to put that on. It's a very nice event, and we had a great turnout, so I just want to thank everybody for that. And then I also want to remind everybody that they do have spaghetti dinner at the Legion this Thursday night. And if for no other reason at all, Councilmember Saavedra's grandmother, who, how old is she now?
Ninety-seven.
She's ninety-seven years old, and she doesn't miss a spaghetti dinner. She's down there working it. And she, she's quite a lady, and, you know, she kind of sits there, and every once in a while, she has to roll her eyes at us kids, you know, the ones that are sixty and fifty years old. But she does, she does a terrific job and a great lady. Don't forget the fly-in this Saturday either. Thank you.
Thank you for that plug about my grandma. She is amazing, by the way, so. I have nothing to report.
I have nothing.
I have nothing to report.
I worked the Borderlands. Didn't think I was gonna be able to work it, because it was raining. Soon as we finished it, there was another downpour. But there was, it was, it was a good turnout, more than I thought would come out because of the weather. And thank you, Sienna, for helping. That's it.
Great. A lot of good things coming up this month. Obviously, this Saturday, we've got our monthly Coolidge Airport fly-in, pancake breakfast. One of our favorite pilots is in the audience back there, Daryl. He loves coming to these, and we hope he can come this time. You know, I think we've got a lot of good, exciting things coming up with the Friday, the eighth. We've got the Christmas in the park and the light parade, beginning at four PM in San Carlos Park, and then all the festivities follow that. And then we have, on Friday, the fifteenth, if you're interested, Elliot Pollak, his, I think the guy that actually purchased the company from Elliot Pollak, Danny Court, will be doing the twenty-twenty-four economic forecast, which is always popular, now partnership breakfast meeting. If you're interested, let Sienna know, and she can get you signed up for that. But you need to get in early, because it does develop pretty quickly. And Mayor, that's really all I have at this time.
Okay, thank you, Rick. And I don't have anything to, this time. We're very, we stay very busy, and things are going. I want to thank Dr. Dan for showing up, and I don't know if he's gonna drive back to Ahu tonight or not, but if he do, good luck. Oh, okay. I knew you would. But thank you, everybody, for coming. Daryl's gotta fly out tonight, so I better get him going. So I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Thank you, everybody. We're adjourned.